All right, welcome to the eight o'clock agenda meeting on October seventeenth. Ms. Barbara will not be in attendance today, so I'll be running the meeting. Joe Daughtry has the invocation and Commissioner Acock has the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Crawford, you want me to go through everything or?
Sure. We'll then do the approval of the minutes, a discussion and adjustment of the agenda. We do have one request to remove under the consent agenda. Let's see, where is it? You already removed it. Remove the, we're removing.
It was under new business.
It was under new business, that's right. The preliminary plat for Hudson Village number fourteen under new business, we're removing it from this meeting. It'll come back before yet another meeting.
I did that.
And then we have a walk-on for a right-of-way request from Duke Progress. We'll put that under consent and Andrew will go over that. When we get to under consent, we'll add it as number fourteen under consent.
We need to do so with attention upon.
Right, okay, yeah. That is approval under consent, we'll get to that. And then we move on to special presentations where we'll have a motion to approve the 2023 First Responders Day in Wayne County. Proclamation is presented by Wayne County's first responders and read by Chief Allen Michael Price of the Seven Springs Fire Department. Number four is a motion to approve the 2023 Operation Green Light for Veterans proclamation is presented by Veteran Services Director Amy Smith. Then we'll have number five is an introduction of the Wayne County Leadership Institute program by Assistant County Manager Ginger Moore. And do we have, I'm assuming we have appointments?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we'll move on to a public hearing at number six to receive public comments on an amendment to section seventy, seventy-six of the Wayne County subdivision ordinance regarding preliminary and final plat submitted requirements.
Is that at a specific time?
That is at, should be at nine thirty.
Nine thirty, my apologies.
Okay. You'll remember that is where we're correcting the checklist on who can submit preliminaries.
Oh, yeah, yep, 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 yep.
Then we have unfinished business. We have a motion to approve amendment number two of the agreement with Withers and Ravenall of the Goldsboro Industrial Campus project with appropriate budget amendment. That was a change I brought to you previously. I think it was seventy, seventy-eight thousand? Seventy-one, seventy-two thousand dollars. You asked me to go back to the Withers and negotiate the price down and I think it's down to fifty-two, fifty-one thousand? Fifty-one thousand, yeah, from seventy-six, five to fifty-one thousand. So I'll be seeking approval of that. That's, any questions on that? We can go over it.
Good negotiator.
Yeah, better than nothing, yeah. Number eight is a motion to approve the CDBG NR grant twenty dash thirty-six forty-five project startup items, plans and policies. David Harris is here if you want him to give a brief. He can go over it now or he can go over it during the meeting. I mean, that's up to you. Probably just go over it during the meeting. This'll be pretty fast. And then we'll get to our consent agenda. Item number nine is budget amendments. Ask Angie to go over those.
Okay, the first one is budget amendment one seventeen. And this is from a reappropriation to pay for the friends of Seymour for our contract of sixteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
No, it has not. It's still rolling around and around.
It's taking its time today. So that is our quarterly payment?
That's the full amount that will be paid in four payments.
Okay.
That's the total amount, so we'll break it up.
All right. Thank you.
Budget amendment number one twenty. That's for services on aging. They receive six hundred and fourteen dollars from donations. Budget number one twenty-three is from social services. They are moving funds from their salaries and wages line item to their overtime line item. This is to cover the cost of any administrative or clerical staff working overtime during the month of October. That is covered fifty percent reimbursable. Number one twenty-four is moving funds between programs, eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. This is for a position reclassification for increased job duties. This also is reimbursable fifty percent by state and federal funds. Number one twenty-seven is to appropriate funds that we received from insurance claim. This is three thousand, eighty-seven dollars and seventy-two cents to damage to an on-call truck with OES.
This the one that got shot?
Yes, sir.
Good thing I brought our people on. Where's that at?
On Klingman Street.
Yeah, just left it now, one more.
Just out at the corner, at the corner of Service Road and Klingman.
Like Corporate and, oh, yeah. I don't see it. All right, sorry.
Budget amendment number one twenty-nine is to move, is from the Health Department. This is to move twenty thousand from salaries and wages to our professional line item. This is to cover the contract for Dr. Stackhouse as interim health director. Budget number one thirty-four is from OES. This is moving the expenses that were associated with our safety director position since that position has been moved to the HR department. And the last one is number one thirty-six, and this is the Health Department, and we are moving funds from professional services to drug-related, drug and related supplies. This is just to realign a product, an agreement addendum from communicable disease, and that's thirty thousand.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for that. We'll move on to our next item is our number ten late elderly disabled exemption applications. Scroll through those. There's several of them. And then we move on to item number eleven, our late disabled veteran exemption application. These have all been vetted by the tax office and are appropriate to be approved. And then also we move to our late present use value application. There's one of those. And then item thirteen is a late property tax exemption application from a nonprofit. Those are all been vetted by the tax office and are approved, seeking approval. Moving on to new business.
That's the number fourteen for Duke.
Oh, yeah, fourteen for Duke. You're correct. Andrew, you want to get up and discuss this request?
Good morning. Duke Energy reached out. I just signed out about it last week, but for the detention center, for the new wing that we're building, they need to, we need to grant an easement to them so they can extend the primary line to serve what will be the new side of the detention center. I would ask that you make this subject to county attorney approval. I had a message from the right-of-way agent yesterday. We need to follow up with him. We'd like to get the property description and the easement paperwork a little bit more specific. Right now it's not very specific, and he left me a voicemail yesterday, and I think we can work through that. So if you'd just make that easement subject to county attorney approval, that'd be best. And there's a map attached as well. You can kind of see where the line's going in, and obviously our new facility, excuse me, is going to be on this side, so the line will go in between the two.
Is that underground?
Underground.
Okay. So Carol, you put that on the consent agenda now, or is that something that we need to do?
You'll actually vote on that?
In the meeting.
At nine o'clock.
By no step, do we need to put it on the, do we need to put it on the paperwork here, or does it matter?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Your copy doesn't matter, Mr. President.
So we're leaving this on the consent agenda? Unless you all request it to be someone, yeah. It's pretty straightforward. You have to come up with some kind of agreement to get power to that building.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Then we move on to, we were, we removed Hudson Village, so we'll move on to a motion to approve the outfit proposal from Mosley Architects to changes to the shell space and other modifications to the D S, S and H Health Department building, and appropriate budget amendment attached. And this is the anticipating additional employees for Medicaid expansion into that shell space. This is the additional monies needed for Mosley to outfit and design that area. So I think it is, comes to a total of, let's see, forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three dollars.
That's just designed for.
That's correct.
And have you already gotten a price for the outfit from PA?
No, sir. They would actually, part of their job would be to get that priced out, yeah, as part of this contract.
And you're recommending that we do that now?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Sooner we can get that going, the better. And then we, any other questions on that one? If not, we'll move on. We got county managers' report, board of commissioners committee reports, closed session.
Yes.
Yes, we will have a closed session, and then we can adjourn after a closed session.
So do we want to run a closed session now?
Yes, we can.
All right. Now, a motion to go to closed session?
So move on.
For the purpose of, for the purpose of your law, you preserve.
All right, so we can plug on.
All right, we're at a closed session. We'll take a five-minute recess before.
All right, let's welcome everyone to our October 17th Commissioner meeting of Wayne County. Ms. Barbara wasn't being able to be with us today, so I'll be running the meeting. Our invocation is by Commissioner Joe Daughery.
Okay, let's bow heads. Lord, may your goodness and love be present with us today. Come bless our meeting with unity, hope, and vision. Lord, build in each of us a deep respect for one another. Lord, we pray for hope. Come stir your hope within our hearts and renew our faith. May your vision fill our lives as we seek to work for improving the lives here in Wayne County. We ask this in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Rayco.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sirs. I entertain a motion for approval of the October 3rd, '23 meeting. For move. All in favor, please vote.
On that screen.
All opposed, do the same. All right, Mr. Crouplers, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, sir. Under your consent agenda, I'd like to add item number 14. Duke Progress Power Line Easement Agreement. Pending attorney approval, this would be at the new jail complex on William Street for a power line to be installed. Also, under new business, remove item 14, a motion to approve preliminary plat for Hudson Village.
All right, I can entertain a motion for approval of the adjusted agenda. All in favor, please vote. All opposed, do the same.
Okay, we're moving on to special presentations. Item number three is a motion to approve the 2023 First Responders Day in Wayne County proclamation as presented by Wayne County's first responders and read by Chief Allen Michael Price of the Seven Springs Fire Department. I'll invite him up to the podium.
First Responders Day in Wayne County, 2023. Whereas Wayne County first responders are our families, neighbors, friends. Whereas Wayne County first responders are our families, neighbors, friends, church members, and coworkers who are trained as law enforcement officers, firefighters, emergency medical technicians, and dispatchers to provide assistance in our time of need. And whereas Wayne County first responders are the ones who show up in face of danger and natural disasters because they are committed to serving others. And whereas Wayne County first responders have responded to, witnessed, and assisted in tragedies, heartbreaks, helplessness, and disbelief that we unrecognized. And whereas Wayne County first responders do not have the ability to change the course of an event, but their skills and compassion can help make any situation better. And whereas Wayne County First Responders Day recognizes the heroic men and women who make it their business to take immediate action when disaster strikes. Now therefore, Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby deem an honor and pleasure to proclaim October 28th, 2023, as National First Responders Day in Wayne County and pay a special tribute to the family members of our Wayne County first responders for those untold sacrifices and support they give daily to ensure the safety of our community.
Thank you, sir. I have a motion to approve the 2023 First Responder Day in Wayne County. All in favor, please vote. Do I have any discussion? I should have done that prior to.
And what I would like to do is have them all stand. I'm going to have them come in and stand in front of you and let you all get a picture. This is a important day to recognize. All right, everybody just smile at the cameras. Believe it or not, he's taking your picture. One, two, three. And we thank you.
All right.
Okay. Moving on to number four is a motion to approve the 2023 Operation Green Light for Veterans proclamation as presented by Veteran Services Director Amy Smith. Ask her up to the podium.
Good morning. 2023 Operation Green Light for Veterans proclamation. Whereas Wayne County is home to Seymour Johnson Air Force Base as well as veterans from all across branches of the military. And whereas the residents of Wayne County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community in the armed forces and whose contributions and sacrifices have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas Wayne County seeks to honor these men and women who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas there are approximately 700,000 veterans in the state of North Carolina with over 10,900 of them living in Wayne County. Whereas veterans continue to serve our community by working side by side with us, serving in the churches with our organizations, as well as the American Legion and the Veterans of Foreign Wars by functioning as county veteran service officers in 29 states to help former service members across more than, excuse me, access more than 52 million in federal health, disability, and compensation benefits each year. Whereas approximately 200,000 service members transition into civilian communities annually with an estimated 20% increase expected in the near future. Whereas studies has indicated that up to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life, and many are at high risk for suicide during their first year after military service. And whereas the National Association of Counties encourages all counties, parishes, and boroughs to recognize Operation Green Light for veterans. And whereas Wayne County believes veterans, especially those in our community, deserve special recognition for their sacrifices. Now therefore, with this designation as Green Light for Veterans of Wayne County, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby declares November 6th through November 12th, 2023, as a time to salute and honor the services of our veterans and encourages its citizens to recognize them and their immeasurable sacrifices by displaying a green light in the window of their business and homes during that week. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion to approve the 2023 Operation Green Light for Veterans proclamation. In discussion. All in favor, please vote.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's move it on. We have the introduction of the Wayne County Leadership Institute program by Assistant County Manager Ginger Moore.
Good morning. I am very excited to be able to introduce this program to you today. This is initiative called the Wayne County Leadership Institute, and it is a program that aims to develop and hone the skills of our current employees in the county and help create a career pathway and future leadership for our county. I think this program is wonderful because it outlines the commitment of this board to invest in our employees and their immense value that they provide to the county and our citizens. I wish I could tell you that this was my idea because I would love to take credit for this, but it wasn't. This program came to us through Megan Wilson, our Assistant Library Director. So before we introduce our cohort to you, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Megan and let her speak a little bit about it.
Thank you, Ginger. So this actually came about, as some of you might know, I worked here for about five years and then I left for a few years to go to a neighboring county. And they had something similar that I went through, and it really helped me understand what local government is and the library's role in local government. And so when I came back here, it has kind of always been in the back of my mind that this would really be beneficial because I think this will improve things like communication across the departments and really just help them understand how their department fits within the county. And so what I'm going to do is, we do have a few people absent today, but I'm going to call their names and just have them stand up so that way you can see them. All right. First, and she's not here, is Susan Masuda from the library. The next is Amber Jackson, 911. All right, and then Robert Schroeder from DSS. He is not here. Jessica Barnes, DSS. Allison Sports, Health. Hunter Hema, Health. Tyrone Sutton, Health. Robbie Blanton, Facilities. Corey Oxendine, Finance. Megan Hare, Planning. Brittany Wood, Solid Waste. Casey Locke, HR. And Arlen Cassellanos, HR. And that is our cohort for this year. And this training will be once a month from now. We started our first one last week through June of this year, of next year.
Thank you. Anybody got any questions?
Yeah, can you elaborate a little bit on this? Because this sounds like a real interesting and intriguing program.
Sure. So what it is, is each month we have a different theme. This past month, or this month, was just kind of an overview of the county. So Chip spoke, Andrew spoke, Georgio spoke, Joel spoke. And so that kind of gave them the overall of what is our responsibility to our citizens? What's the organizational structure of the county? What expectations are there as far as public affairs goes? This next one will be budget, so they'll learn about the fiduciary responsibilities of all county employees. But they're going to dive a lot deeper into each topic each month, including everything from economic development to education, everything that the county is responsible for. Anything else I'm leaving out?
No, they're also going to get HR training in every session. All the, you know, the, from the basic items to ADA compliance to FMLA, things they need to know as leaders and future leaders. It also teaches them how to network and gives them the opportunity to interact with other departments and each other and grow as a group.
And each of these people were selected by their supervisors and department heads as being recognized as potential leaders in their department.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
You know, that is great. That is great. We appreciate that. What I would like to see maybe in the future, if we could have a leadership program for our citizens as well, because they don't understand what our job is either. A lot of times they're calling us because a cat is in the tree and they shouldn't be calling us. So I think that will be something in the future that we definitely could have, and I appreciate what you're doing.
I haven't had that call yet.
I've had, I've had one for orange shag rug. They said, can you give me some money to change this orange shag rug? So it's a lot of things.
Well, I'm going to talk it all off. I got one on Christmas Day at lunchtime. A gentleman complaining about water standing in his ditch in his house. Christmas Day at lunchtime.
All right, moving on, appointing committee.
We do have some appointments today, and these will come to you in the form of a motion, Mr. Vice Chair. Motion to reappoint Harold Boucher and Anthony Ham and Chris Wise to the Board of Directors of the Wayne Health Corporation as recommended by the board chair.
Have a motion on the floor for the appointment committee. All right.
Yep, that was the fourth appointment.
Thank you, sir. Going to unfinished?
We'll have to move past our public hearing time. We'll go to unfinished business. Item number seven is a motion to approve amendment two of the amendment with Withers and Ravenoff for the Goldsboro Industrial Campus Project and with an appropriate budget amendment. This previously was an item that I brought before you a couple, several meetings ago. And the board asked that I go back and negotiate the fees associated with this work order. This was a work order for additional design and bidding requirements that when we saw, when the board saw the original layout and design of the park, we added some lots. We added, changed the street. We added an emergency entrance, required the project to be rebid, redesigned. And these are the fees that were associated with that, and we were able to negotiate those down to, get back to the bottom line here. It was originally 76.5, and we negotiated that fee down to $51,000. And I am seeking approval to move forward with this.
Mr. Chair.
I move that we approve the amendment number two with agreement with Withers and Ravenoff.
And the appropriate budget amendment. All right. We got a motion on the floor. Please vote.
What was the figure?
It was originally 76.5, and it was down to 51,000 even, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, 51 even. Okay. Thank you for that. Moving on to item number eight, a motion to approve our CDBG dash Neighborhood Revitalization Grant Number 20 dash 3645, project startup items, plans, and policies. And I'll ask David Harris, our consultant, if he would come forward at the podium and go over this with you.
Good morning.
We've been waiting for you. We've been waiting for you.
The items that are on the agenda for the CDBG program are the typical startup items that basically make sure the county is in, is compatible with all the state and federal requirements. So in essence, we are going to be adopting plans, policies, procedures, et cetera, that will relate to federal, several different federal requirements as a result of the county being a recipient of federal funds. I'll just go through these real quickly. First one is financial management. And actually, it's kind of broken down into, there are three resolutions. All could be adopted as, as one. First resolution, financial management, this is simply where we're identifying the depository, the bank depository for the funds that are received from the state, identifying the finance officer, and identifying the individuals with the county that can sign those requisitions for funds. In essence, the county will have an account set up with the state specifically for CDBG funding, and this kind of puts that into place. Those individuals that are authorized will in fact sign a signature card, much like you, you would with the bank, that, that is sent to Raleigh and authorizes those individuals to, to sign those requests for funds. The next one is a capital project budget ordinance. Because the CDBG program covers multiple fiscal years, we adopt a capital project budget ordinance specifically for it. That way it, it carries over from fiscal year to fiscal year. Budget is real simple, $750,000 grant and $750,000 in expenditures. There was not a required local match for this grant program. The third resolution actually lists the 14 different plans and policies and procedures and so forth that are part of any CDBG program. Adopting of that one resolution would take care of all of them. I'll simply list these. If anybody has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. This will approve the county's participation plan, code of conduct policy, equal employment procurement policy, equal opportunity plan, excessive force policy, fair housing complaint procedure, fair housing plan, language access plan, local jobs initiative, section three plan, policy for equal opportunity, procurement standards policy and plan, residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan, section five of four grievance policy and procedure, and temporary relocation policy. Glad to hear it's any question.
So this is for two-year, is this the one that's for two years? Is this the one that we're adopting, that all this stuff for two years, or is that another one?
Well, it's, it's actually multi-year to be this fiscal year, next fiscal year. If it needs to go into another one, it automatically does. There's not a set number of years. It is, it's actually adopted from beginning to end. Some of these plans are set up, in fact, kind of the way they have it. The policies are set up indefinitely until the state or the federal government decides to change it, then we amend it. The plans, the state requires those to be set up on a three-year period. So if, although we anticipate the project will be finished much less time than that. But if for some reason, well, you may receive another grant. If you receive another grant during this period, these things, you would not have to readopt these policies and guidelines.
That's what I was getting at. So this is actually covering another grant.
They will, the plan, the policies that carry, or carry over indefinitely until required revision, the plans would be good for three years for any CDBG grant.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just can't help myself. This is just a good example of red tape in government. A $750,000 grant, and you've got 14 different plans and policies that you've got to implement. I think that this was announced, what, a year ago?
You had a rolling wood present.
So, and, and here we are, a year later, we're just now getting started into the planning. I mean, it's, there's got to be some way to streamline some of this stuff, you know? It just seems like that they just add on and add on and add on more red tape. But at any rate, that's your job, and I appreciate you so much as somebody's looking after the red tape. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Harris, we lost one of the people who fought for this, Ms. Deborah Graham, she passed away a couple of weeks ago. So she won't get a chance to see us resolve the flooding concern. But I'm hoping that we can kind of get things rolling, you know? There's a lot of elderly people there who want to see some resolve and, you know.
I appreciate that.
Any other questions, comments? Entertaining motion. So moved. All in favor, cast your vote.
And I know you don't put these red tapes in there. You just work through them.
Comes with the territory.
It does. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you for your help.
So what, so what can I tell, tell us now? Have we gotten an environmental report back that was kind of holding off?
We, we actually had environmental almost complete, and the state sent out another set of guidelines. In fact, I sent it to, made a note to Chip, to Chip when it came in. And we are going through those now. Basically, we're just taking the same environmental factors and elaborating on Basically, we're just taking the same environmental factors and elaborating on them even deeper than we did before. And we'll, we see that being submitted, if not the end of October, the first part of November. And then once they have it, thirty days, and we should be able to get the funds released.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Dave.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the adjusted consent agenda?
So moved.
Ma'am?
Sir, hold on.
Oh. All right, new business.
Okay, this would be item fourteen would be the Duke Progress Easement Agreement. No, that was already over. Okay. Oh, yeah, number fifteen is a motion to approve the upfit proposal from Mosley Architects for changes to the shell space and other modifications to the DSS Health Department building, and this would be with an appropriate budget amendment. This is basically for the anticipation of expansion of Medicaid for the space that we had previously set aside in our current design to go back and have Mosley Architects design and upfit that space now during this current process while we're early in the construction phases. And the grand total for that amount, that would be construction documents, bidding, pricing, construction phase, and the furniture design and procurement would be forty-nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand dollars additional to their existing set fee for this extra area.
Entertaining motions for approval? So moved. Any discussion?
The only discussion, Mr. Chairman, is that when we set out to plan for future growth, we were not expecting it quite this soon.
Right.
Agreed?
This was actually kind of mandatory from the, from the feds. We didn't, we didn't have any choice.
Oh, that's correct.
We still got five minutes to go, so.
We can go ahead and go to our comment section if you want to.
All right.
The only comment I really have is remember that we have on Thursday our Eastern Carolina Council Regional Transportation Summit. If you would, you know, like to go, you need to register. This is the first one of, of the Eastern Carolina Council is hosting, and as part of their trying to provide more services to their member counties and cities, this is something they're doing. So we'll be in, participating in it, as well as our Director of Extension Director, Kevin Johnson, will be a speaker there, speaking on transportation issues as related to agriculture. So I'll be in attendance, I think Chris is, but anybody else that'd like to go, please to register.
Evan's going, I think.
You're going to go, is? Okay. So looking forward to that.
At Wayne New Bern.
Send New Bern at the convention center. And also that evening is the industry celebrations, and we'll be coming back and going directly to the industry celebration. That's on Thursday night, if you need to register, if you would like to attend, and I encourage everybody to do so if you would like. Now, that's all my comments.
All right. Thanks, sir. Commissioners, Commissioner Torch, Commissioner Williams?
I saw a city council meeting last night, and what troubled me was that there was a representative from the Ivy family that stated that this board had already agreed to something pertaining to a memorandum. And I just want to let everyone know in the community that if there's only two board members that are meeting, that is not how this board works. This board is a body. So we can have good intentions, two of us, but until the board collectively comes together and decides on something, it's not a agreement. Secondly, I would say, make sure you get out and vote. Your vote is very important. Very important. Sometimes it seems like in Wayne County, and not just Wayne County, in a lot of counties in North Carolina, there's voter apathy, where people feel like their votes don't matter. But your votes do matter, and politics is in everything, not just in this board here. Politics is what's, what's going to your neighborhood, what's not coming to your neighborhood, what's going to help your kids, what's not going to help your kids. So though, politics is in everything, so please use your, your rights to vote. It's very important. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Dor.
You picked up on both of my points. I do want to remind everyone, though, that there is a, another election going on, starts on Thursday for our municipal election, and that's very important. Those individuals that are in those seats that are representing the city also represent Wayne County. Their decisions affect Wayne County. So I really encourage everyone that is within the municipality, that has the opportunity to vote, please go out and vote.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Akot?
No comments today.
Mr. Horner?
No comment.
Mr. Foster?
Um, I don't really have a comment, but I do have something that I would like to discuss in closed session with our attorney if possible.
All right, uh, I don't have any comment. And we got one minute left before our public hearing.
Actually, it is now fifteen.
It's actually nine-thirty, so we will have, go to our public hearing to receive public comments on Amendment to Section Seventy dash Seventy-Six of the Wayne County Subdivision Ordinance Regarding Preliminary and Final Placemetal Requirements. The Board of Commissioners may choose to take action following this public hearing.
All right, public hearing. Mary?
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Is this, I believe we've discussed this before in the past, but basically, to summarize, our ordinance, when it comes to subdivision submittals, when we require a submittal for preliminary plat, the ordinance does not require that it be by an actual surveyor. However, our checklist that we have does indicate that a surveyor would need be needed for a preliminary plat. From what I can tell, we're the only county that would require surveyors to do preliminary plats. Typically, engineers are allowed to do that in other jurisdictions, well, all other jurisdictions except for us, if you go specifically by that checklist. So what we're asking is that you just adjust that checklist to reflect basically what our submittal requirements are, so that in that way, they both match. So with that said, staff has not, this has been advertised, we did advertise it in the paper, we have not heard any comments at this point, but it is a public hearing, so there may be some here, I'm not sure, but.
Adam Clark, can anybody sign up?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And Barry, it was just two items that was added that changed, changed it somewhat, correct?
Right, yeah. Basically, it was regarding the surveyor, basically, there's two of them. One of them is for a surveyor or engineer can create a preliminary plat if there's no stormwater calculations, or if there's stormwater, then the engineer would actually need to create the preliminary plat, because that survey, that engineer would have to seal those, those calculations and all with the new stormwater rules. So there's actually two changes in that checklist, but it just clarifies what the engineer and what the surveyor can do, but allows for both of them to preliminaries if there's no stormwater calculations.
Any other comments or questions for Barry? If not, uh, we're here to close, what's the pleasure of the board on this matter?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, sir.
I meant, what can we approve the changes as requested?
All right. All in favor of vote? Thank y'all. All right, so we have a matter for closed session. Mr. Foster?
We would, we would request a closed session for, to consult with your attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege.
All right, have a motion to go in closed session? So moved. All right, I'll. Thank y'all.
We good?
I'll be adjourned.